Okay, we're now recording. Okay. This is the boilerplate of the meeting. I have to read this as a part of the governor's executive order for remotely held meetings. This meeting in the Knowing Zone and Commission will take place to resume remote meeting technology. My name is Rick Smith. I'm chairman of the commission. The host of the meeting is Larry Dunn, who's an alternate zoning commission member. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time. And we all have to remind ourselves to do this. When you see your name on the screen, it's seductive. You think you don't need to identify yourself, but we may have people sit in that listen. So they need to know who's speaking. The participants in this meeting will be the commission members and staff will identify ourselves in a moment. Persons with applications for architectural design review that have been previously submitted for consideration. And the commission's counsel if he joins. At the discretion of the chairman and with the concurrence of the commission elected alternate members of the commission may participate during old business during discussion of the short term rental issue. Participants who would like to comment on an item or share a screen item should indicate such by using the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen or by raising your hand visually in front of the screen and we'll hope that Larry or I see you. After the raised hand has been detected, the participant will have the opportunity to speak after being called upon by the chairman. Participants should mute their microphones unless until called upon. Procedurally to offer a motion or second emotion commissioners should put on a motion commission as we called upon individually by the chair. The public can participate in the meeting as observers and at the start of the meeting during the general comments section of the agenda at which items issues not on the agenda can be used for future commission consideration. Things not on the agenda. During comments section, a member of the public wishing to speak will be asked to raise his or her hand by using the raise hand icon to bottom of the screen. All participants, including commissioners and staff must identify themselves before speaking each time they speak. Members of the public can also submit comments by writing to the commission after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed tonight. Finally, and probably most important, a recording tonight's meeting will be posted on the town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting. One of the nice features of Zoom is you get a literal video record, audio and video of the entire proceeding, which has been very useful. So that concludes the boilerplate. So I'll call us to order. It's seven. I did it at seven o'clock. It's 7:02 now. I'm going to identify the members because it's easier than having them figure out who's first to speak. Dana Oviette is a member. Blake Powell is a member. Beth Steele is a member. I'm a member. Knowing Lynn is Lynn Marshall. She's an alternate elected alternate commission member and she is being seated tonight for Arthur Tanner, who's absent. So she has full rights and privileges of a commission member for this meeting. We also have staff Jennifer Johnson. Now to the public hearing tonight, just for the record, and so you know, the solar application language change that will allow solar applicants to be reviewed and approved by the zoning officer instead of coming before the commission. That will be scheduled for the August meeting, not tonight. Which is why Trinity Solar is here to present their application so they don't have to wait a month, I'm guessing. So having said that, there's no public hearing. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak? Who is not on the agenda on subjects not on the agenda? Would anyone like to speak on a subject that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Move on. I will note in the context of public comment number on short term rentals with receive them. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in the in the course of of the month of July. And we can expect this to continue and it's very beneficial and useful. So people out there in the community have an opportunity to let us know what they're thinking. And obviously, if we see something that we like, we can pick it up and pick the ball up and run with it, if you will. The other comment we received during this period is not related to short term rentals. It was from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. One of the requirements of a rule change or language in our ordinance on the solar panel issue. We have to notify a number of of public agencies, give them the opportunity to comment. We got comment back on July 16th from DEEP, which said they're okay with the language change that we had proposed. So that's public comments correspondence received and so forth. So we'll move to applications. Application of Trinity Solar for a certificate of design appropriateness to install roof mounted solar panels at 154 Brook Street, Knowing. And before we start, does one of you have the vote, the language for the motion? That we always use. Okay, I'll end up having to read that then if nobody does. And I will find it now before we get started. All right. Thank you. Mike, you're on to present your application. And you are now unmuted.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you to your commissioner, your board. Special thank you to Jennifer for helping me coordinate to get this on tonight. Appreciate it. So we are in the process of, as you know, installing solar at the home of Mrs. Philora Phillips on 154 Brook Street, Brook Avenue. I might have to toggle back and forth here for a minute. Small system was 14 modules. Utilizing modules on both sides of her roof and an inverter on the outside of her house. Next to the meter with a cutout, a safety cutout switch near the meter. If you were to stand on the roadway in front of her home and look at the home, her meter is on the right side, near the front corner of the home. I do have plenty of photographs and what have you. If you'd like me to skim through. I'm not sure if you have the full photo report that I included in the applications. But I, if you want me to share my screen and roll through those, I'm happy to do that.
We have all received the the hard copies that you provided.
Would you like me to talk through that? That photo report of the homes, the surrounding homes, the maps?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, briefly to to discuss the context of the neighborhood, but that's never been an issue for the commission. We have a couple of very specific things. We try to make sure we cover with you. But because it is an application for architectural design review, you probably should cover it. You know, you can be fairly brief. Okay, before you do that, well, let's just see. Larry, can you get those photos up from the package Jen had sent out? Might be better if we marginalize our own faces on this thing and and there you go. Thank you. Okay. So Larry will scroll where you tell him to, Mike.
Okay, very good. So this is the technical drawing on it. If you scroll up, I believe one page, there you go. Here's an overview, you know, looking down on the diagram. On the left side, you'll see that they're marked R1, R2, R3. That represents both sides of the roof. So R1 has three, six modules and roof two has has eight modules. That R3 is some type of a roof set in some capacity. So we're we'll be on either side or both sides of that particular roof. On that same diagram, if you look on the lower right hand corner, you'll see a box marked AC DC. That's where the inverter would go. The box next to that or below that, as we look at it, is a disconnect switch. In the box below that with the bubble represents the existing utility meter on that home. So that's the that's the kind of the technical layout for that, for this particular system. If you scroll up, this is in the same report. This might just be the technical drawing on it. Do you have any questions on? On what I just discussed?
I doubt it, but I'm going to ask by getting this whole screen open for all the commissioners. And then we'll see. Anybody have a question on the presentation so far? Okay, seeing none, go ahead and continue.
Okay, so this is just a sky view with the modules kind of superimposed onto the roof. So just a different version of what we discussed. So, all right, this is a good. The top picture marked Cydex Pro. Cydex Pro is a property tool that we use to show us who owns what property. But it does. It does mark out the property lines and where the where the homes are. If you look at this, basically the center of the photograph, there's a yellow pin drop on the subject property. And this is Philip's home. And as we scroll through these photographs, I went in a specific order. Immediately to the right, so three o'clock will be the first homes as you go through this and then drop down to the house below that on the corner. We're going to move left across those houses on the bottom and back up and then around to the home, almost like a, you know, rectangle. In the final home in this photograph is the home directly behind it that has the in the ground swimming pool. So that's kind of the order that these photographs are in. If we if we look, if we go back up just one moment. Okay, the the home here where the red car is, if you look on that, there is you can see the meter on the side of the home. And right in that area next to the meter is where that inverter and safety cutout switch would be placed. Okay, if you want to scroll through the next one. Different views of the same home. This is in the back corner. Same side of the home, looking, you know, looking at the home. And then the the picture on the bottom is is actually from the street. It was the best photo I could get of that lower corner on the home. The home's kind of, you know, tucked into its own little spot there. We can scroll up to the next one. Again, here's the here's the map and it shows the way that the homes are are situated nearby. With the subject property being marked with the yellow pin drop, teardrop. Go to the next one. This is the home immediately to the right of the subject property. This is the one that's actually on the corner. What it looks like, you know, from the front. And then the picture below that with the little picket fence in it, that is looking from the subject property to that white home on the corner. If we go to the next one. This one. I I believe this is the same. The same way, looking from Mrs. Phillips property to to that one. It's hard to hard to see. No, if you go back again, I apologize. That photograph was from that large white colonial. I believe looking back at at her property through the tree line. It's hard to say. It's pretty secluded in there. But I I do see her home in there to the left. So this is from that white colonial looking back at Mrs. Phillips property. If you go to the next one. Okay, across the street from that white colonial is this home. This is, you know, in the driveway, more or less looking at that that property to get a close up of the home. And then if we just turn around where I was standing and actually go back out to the end of his driveway, this is again, looking at his home from the direction of the subject property to this home. And then the next photographs should be from that home. Yep, from that home, looking back towards Mrs. Phillips property, which you can barely see under the tree branches. Through the wood line. This house is pretty closed in from from neighbors and the visibility to see it. If you go to the next one. I'm not sure if I lost you guys here. Okay, so this is the house, you know, we're going to move down the street, which is kind of across from Mrs. Phillips property. This is the next home down, a frontal view of that home. And then the picture below that is from Mrs. Phillips home to that home. So again, can't really see each other.
Mike, I'm going to propose that you go more quickly through these. I'm guessing unless the commissioners raise their hand and wave at me.
Okay.
This won't be the influential part of the presentation and
Sure.
Do you agree with that? I see none. Go ahead.
Okay, so this, these photographs basically follow that same format all the way through. So if you want to scroll through it and give time, and then if anybody's got any questions, I'll I'll jump in. Would that be sufficient?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Okay. That particular photograph, there was a home in there. The gentleman was outside. I asked him if I could take reciprocal photographs. He kicked me off his property and I left. And I believe these should be the last ones of the the homes surrounding the subject property.
Okay. Before I take questions from the commissioners, one that always comes up is, well, two that come up. Could you comment on the coloration of the piping that will come from the roof down to your inverter? And also any piping on the roof?
Okay, so the the we try, we strive very hard not to have exposed conduit where we can avoid it. This is an older home. The the attic spaces was somewhat limited to to access, I was told. I was not inside the home with the COVID thing. I waited outside and talked to the customer outside. The, so where the where the modules are. The attic access determines if we can get that 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 conduit inside to connect the 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 different arrays. And then there's a conduit I have to get from those arrays down to that to that inverter. And again, this is a, this is a, this is going to be a tricky one because of the age of the home and the way it's laid out with that dormer on that secondary roof. There, there is, there is a potential of having a conduit run on the roof. If we can avoid that, we certainly will. And then from that roof down to the inverter. Now, there is a, there is a storm drain that comes down right there. You know, we can, we can, if we had to come down that way, we could tuck that in. If we had an ability to run the conduit through a closet or what have you, we would certainly do that. But, you know, and, you know, we strive to make these as clean as possible. This is a, this is a home that's, you know, sometimes, you know, we'll go in and plan to do it a certain way and then find out we can't, we can't do it. If you've got to make a connection underneath the array and make that watertight. And yet we can't get a guy inside to do that appropriately. You know, this one might be a little bit trickier.
Just so you know, it, there's nothing that opposes you putting a conduit outside if you have to. What we try to do in our role as reviewing the architectural design is to make sure the down running pipage color marries as close as possible to the color of the house. And the one on the roof, if it's a black roof, that that one be insulated or covered in whatever covering you use in a color that matches the roof. So we don't have discord between the colors and the background.
Okay, and and where I, I absolutely understand that. And I'd love to see an example or two of what they've they've done down there. So if you've had that on a previous install, we're happy to take care of that. The the question that comes in, and I'm not an electrician, but it's my understanding, we are not allowed to to paint that conduit to match or what have you, because it's a violation of the electrical codes. So our, you know, we, we certainly want this as clean as possible and we'll do everything we can. Sometimes we'll tuck it in under a ridge. The conduit coming down on the side of the house, if I can enclose that some way, we'd be happy to do that as long as we're compliant with electrical code.
Have you done other installs in Knowing?
Oh, we've done plenty of them. And I actually have
Just drive through town and and you'll see a number of them where, you know, if the house is beige and the the conduit is white, that's close enough. If the roof is black or dark gray and the conduit is black, that's sufficient. We just, we urge you to marry those colors as closely as you can. Okay, staying within code, of course, but okay. Other issue that always comes up, and I'll, I'll just put it out there so you can respond in the context of your presentation. We try to get the inverter and the other electronics in the back of the property not visible to the street. I don't think it's such a big concern here because of the surrounding vegetation. But, you know, a new owner could come in and cut all the trees down. I don't know if if that's possible with this property. But I I only offer that. That's usually one of the things we ask about. So I'll put it out there for you to respond to. And then other commissioners are free when they get to questions and answers to decide whether it's a big deal to them or not.
Okay, so I can, I can certainly look at moving that inverter to the back of the house. That may also help us. If I can do that in I, in in worst case scenario, if I've got to have a conduit run on the roof. Now I I go off that back and drop down in the back. You don't see it. You know, so that's a potential. The deciding factor is if I can get if she's got basin access there and I can get that inverter around back and run my conduit in the house to where that meter is, I can come out there. I have to have that safety cutout switch. I believe it's within four feet of that meter. Okay, okay, so the safety cutouts which has to be there. I have no choice. But if I can move that inverter around to the back and run my conduit down that way and and through the basin, we're happy to do that.
Okay, that's only, I'm happy you presented it that way. It's up to the commissioners to decide whether it's an issue for them or not. So is there anything else in your presentation or does that conclude it?
I don't, I don't have anything else other than I do have access to a report of previous Trinity Solar installs within your jurisdiction. But I could review with you quickly if you wanted me to do that. If not, if not, we're good.
Okay, so commissioners, do you have questions of Mike? Okay, I don't see any. I'm going to read the motion. One of you is going to say so moved and the other is going to say second to maintain our parliamentary procedure here. I move to determine that based on the potential impact on neighborhood architectural harmony and character, property values, historical integrity and or public health and safety. The level of review deemed appropriate for this application is a site plan review under section 2.26.6.5 and to both waive all specifics of middle requirements that are not included in this application because they would not aid the commission in its determination of the application's compliance with section 2.26. And to accept the application as complete. And to approve the application of Trinity Solar for certificate of design appropriateness to install roof mounted solar panels at 154 Brook Street, Knowing. Because it meets the criteria set forth in section 2.26 of the zoning ordinances of the Knowing Fire District. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, Blake moved it. Beth seconded it. Discussion on the motion. Would you like any language in there consistent with moving the inverter to the backyard if possible? Or requiring the color matching that we I talked about? Or are you satisfied with Mike's response that he'll do it if he can?
Satisfied.
Okay, secondary is satisfied. I see no other objections. So all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. I see five. It's unanimous. So motion is approved. Mike, I don't know where, well, Bill will be going now. You can see Bill Mulholland to get the permit based on this application, but it's approved. So you you get the paperwork from Bill.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all very much.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Zoning enforcement officer report. We're going to postpone that till the next meeting. Review of minutes, we have three, the regular meeting of June 16th, the special meetings of June 25th and July 9th. They are behind the agenda that you all received. Comments on the minutes, any or all of them? Seeing no hands flashing in front of my screen. Is there a motion to approve all three? Or we can just accept them? What was the term I used to use? Without objection, the three sets of minutes are approved. Any objection? Seeing none, the three sets of minutes are approved. Old business, further discussion of short term rental issues, consideration of individual proposals, priorities, consolidation, revision and elimination of potential measures. The large matrix, which we have all built as staff work over the last week, is back behind the third set of minutes. And a minute Larry will, I think you may already have that up there behind. Yeah, it's up there. Larry, can you scroll? There you go. Thank you. And that is the first page of them. And I saw Dana's hand just before the screen. Let me see if I can get him back there. Okay, Dana, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Dana Oviette, I would like to make a motion, Rick.
Okay.
I'd like to to move that we follow the course that we originally agreed to four weeks ago. And that was to present to follow Lynn's suggestion that we that we compile our own presentations and which, Rick, you were very enthusiastic about and to present them each individually so that we, so the public and the fellow commissioners could have a vision of what each individual commissioner's proposal would look like. And I would like to put aside discussing the individual issues in the matrix that you have up now because I think it continues on a course of discussing parts. In fact, 55, 56 parts right now that we've used in the past, not only through the whiteboard, but also through a previous discussion three, four weeks in a row of NIP's matrix. And I think it's not leading us anywhere. And I would like to try something different. And that's, that's my motion.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second? Lynn? Okay, Lynn seconds. Okay, discussion on the motion. Dana?
So Dana Oviette, I just want to take you through history according to Dana, as I've been sitting on the board for the last year. When I first joined the board, there was a decision made to have a When I first joined the board, there was a decision made to have a whiteboard. And these were discussion of individual components that could go into a regulation. Parking, what we're going to do about supervision and STRs and so forth and so on. And a lot of this was thrown up in the whiteboard. That lasted for about three or four months. It was a good idea, but I think there was some agreement that this wasn't quite working out. And so NIP volunteered to form matrix and organize this. And my understanding was that he organized this according to what was put up and presented on the whiteboard from all the commissioners. But that he applied his own proposal to it, his own prejudice, his own way of doing things. And it divided the groups up on the basis of legal residency, time spent in Noank, whether the person was offsite or onsite. And at the last meeting that we discussed this matrix, we agreed that it should be cut down to one column. And that was because we all agreed that discriminating into groups on the basis of legal residency being offsite versus onsite and time spent in Noank was not the way we wanted to go. Okay, so fine. Forward a couple of weeks, or I think is at that same meeting, Lynn came up with a great suggestion. She said, why not have each individual present their own presentation? And NIP was very happy about this because he got to see other people go through the pain and sweat that he went through in order to present his individual proposal. I was really pleased because it would finally give me an opportunity to present what I think has been ignored for a long time, that is, the idea of limited permits. Rick was really enthusiastic about it because he said, why don't we have a murder board? Each of us will get 10, 15 minutes to give an elevator speech about our proposal, present the vision. And then each of us could pick away at it to see if it was viable or not. And the other reason why it was a great idea was because it wasn't individual parts being put together and discussed individually. It was, the way it was originally done, it was a bottom up process. And Lynn's idea was a top down process. That is, the person gave, was able to give their vision and see, and everybody will see why that vision worked with, with the individual parts that they were including, the issues. And it's kind of like, Blake will appreciate this, it's kind of like building a boat, okay? You have all these individual parts on the floor. And you have a sail, you have a centerboard, you have a wheel, you have engines, you have all this stuff. And the analogy is similar to what we're doing because we've read on all these different proposals across the country. And all these proposals have had all these different possibilities. So we've got all these parts laid out on the floor. And what we've been doing is we've been picking up all these parts thinking that they are equally important. And I maintain that they're not equally important. What I want to do is I want to have each individual proposal's vision to see why they used the things that they did in their vision. For example, if Blake builds a sailboat, he's going to take a sail and he's going to take a couple of other things, a tiller, but he's not going to use the engine. And he's, you know, he's not going to have a mast. Well, that's the thing that I want to see. And I think Lynn put it very well in her, in her letter a couple of weeks ago. And here's, and here's the advantage of this. Using Beth as an example, I would like to know, for example, why she has limits on the number of nights for each rental and why it is different for summer, for summer season and for other sessions. I'm curious about what her reasoning is. I want to understand it before I judge and I'm willing to learn from her. She may have an important point to make that I have missed entirely. I want to give her the time and attention that she deserves. And that's exactly what I want to do. I want to understand the proposals and where these proposals are coming from. I don't want to continue to argue individual points which may not get us to the boat that we want.
Okay, I have a view. Just because I said one thing at a past meeting doesn't mean I can't change my mind. I hope everyone accepts that and it's the same for everybody else. We agreed to do tonight's agenda as it's laid out tonight. And I don't mind so much having the seminar approach, which is the way I described it off in the future, but I mind an idea that would say we suspend all activity tonight and instead go to the individual approaches if we're not doing it tonight. It's hard enough to get people together during busy times and focus on this issue. But to come to a meeting and say, we're not going to do what we set out to do last week, I have trouble with. Now, there is an opportunity here in what I'm saying, and let me describe it that way to see if I can make sure it's toned in a positive way. I would not be against having our next meeting be, quote, the seminar, where people present their, their individual views. And as I had described it in the past as a murder board, so we could hear the presentation, then poke at it with questions and answers. Most of the things which will be in discord are on the first and second page of this matrix, that is, the true management measures. The ones of lesser significance to the difference in the various plans are administrative measures and enforcement measures and things that I always call boilerplate to a regulatory program because they're not the things that actually regulate the public's behavior. They're the things that make you able to administer it. So if the commission wanted to pursue the seminar approach, and I'm ambivalent, I can go either way. By that, I mean, I could start at the top of this thing moratorium on STR and start moving down the list tonight. Or we could postpone those so-called management measures and do the individual presentations. I can go either way on that. But I don't want to waste tonight's hour and a half left. And I would propose if the commission wants to hear the seminars, we should jump to page four or thereabouts. I can't see it because I can't scroll it. And try and come to common agreement on things like administrative measures, enforcement measures, things that are going to be required no matter what we do, whether we limit permits or we don't limit permits, whether we have day limits or we don't have day limits. Those are the things in the individual plans that I'm sure people want to be able to explain and then hear questions and answers. So long winded way, I'm hoping other people are going to weigh in with comments because right now, I would say by the motion and the second, that there are two people in favor of doing the individual planned presentations. And I can go either way. So I'd like to hear some more arguments. And I'll leave that open to everyone. Larry, as an alternate that we've already agreed to have active in this whole thing without a vote, feel free to weigh in if you have an opinion, but certainly Blake and Beth as well.
I don't think these two approaches are necessarily mutually exclusive. You know, the way we discussed it during the last meeting and the way NIP was presenting it and the way Lynn was presenting it might have sounded a little bit different. But at the end, even if we went through this new table here, line by line, if everyone presents why they arrived at the block that they filled in and does that, I would, I was expecting people would be doing that from the perspective of their overall philosophy and approach to, to their whole plan. So I think it comes out the same either way. We get to hear what everyone's approach is. And it's just a matter of whether we do it by these rows or if we do it by the columns, basically. No matter what, all these things in this table get covered.
Larry, then Lynn, then Dana.
Well, I kind of aligned with Blake because the way I looked at this is, as we went through this, there'd be an introduction that says, what was the overriding philosophy? Dana's point of, quote, my column. And then go into the details if there are questions. So, you know, maybe it's a kind of a merged way of going quickly through, you know, some of the basic tenants. I mean, I, you know, it's, it would take me probably two and a half minutes to go through the philosophy that the column was specified, at least my column was specified. So I think I'm more aligned with Blake than trying to split this into two parts.
Okay. Lynn?
Yeah, I agree with everything that Dana said. I thought that was quite eloquent. And Rick, I understand, I understand what you're saying about trying to get some of it cleaned up with the chart. That makes a lot of sense to me, too. One thing, I think that the chart, I don't think by going through the chart, you're really going to get at the same thing, end up with the same result as you do when somebody presents it in the entirety and we ask questions in their entirety. And what I think is going to be missing is the pointer toward the goals. That doesn't get addressed. And so you can get pretty far along with it, agreement about, you know, whether it has a motor or a centerboard or whatever. But it, you don't get the whole piece because the things play against each other. The different, the different parameters play against each other. And that's what I think would, would end up missing from this. I do think, when we talked about the chart as being a really good summary document so that we could compare across easier and if any interested members of the public, if they could also follow it. I think one thing that we should add is a, to facilitate that is another row, and it should be the first row. Because all of these, basically what you're doing is providing some kind of limit. And so that that first row would be the primary limiters. So that, so that Blake's would be number of days per year. Dana's would be number of licenses. So that header, I think, you know, basically it becomes a header. But it is the overall crux of the matter, the summary from which all the rest of those decisions fall. So I suggest adding that to the chart.
Dana, then me, then Beth.
Dana Oviet. First of all, the matrix will not do justice, in my opinion, to, to the limited permit proposal. The letters that we've received so far, I've read through. And it gives me the impression that the public is misinterpreting what limited proposals, what limited permits are. And I think that if they were given the opportunity, and if you commissioners were given the opportunity to understand it from the top down and organized in a fashion that you could follow A, B, C, D, E, it would be much more effective to make the point, anybody's proposal's point, rather than to compare them by issue. At least for me, it would be. And I think the, I think the public would benefit from a presentation like that, too. Because then they won't have to go back and forth between all these different matrices and all these different boxes to see who wants what and who doesn't want what.
I'm going to yield to Beth because she hadn't spoken yet and I've spoken once, so go ahead, Beth.
I mean, I'm happy to discuss my overall philosophy and the way I filled in this matrix. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have about my thinking. Other than that, I really don't know what my presentation would entail because I feel that it's in the matrix itself. But I, I really, it doesn't matter to me how we go forward at this point. So I guess I'm neutral, but I will say that if I'm giving a presentation tonight, the philosophy in answering whatever questions other commissioners may have about what I wrote, I don't really have much else to offer.
My view, I'd be happy to present my proposal at some time in the future, but it's not necessary. I can cover the things in here that I think need to be presented and people to think about. And then they can start to ask questions. I could do it row by row if I had to. If we do a seminar type approach, I'll take my own 15 or 20 minutes and present it. I don't know, I know for my proposal and probably most others with the possibility of Dana's and Lynn's, I don't know what we gain by the seminar, but I'm not going to stamp my foot and say absolutely I oppose it with one condition. Dana, is the intent of your motion that if we pass it, we adjourn the meeting and we schedule presentations for a future meeting? Or is your intention more in line with what I had suggested earlier, which would be we agree not to talk about moratoriums, permits, daily limits and so forth. And we devote tonight to administrative and enforcement measures that maybe we can find some harmony in our thinking on. What's your intent?
Dana Oviet, my intent was that we abandon this process entirely of, of, of comparing all these things across the different matrices and all these different ideas. We haven't even agreed upon what are the most top 10 or top 15, whatever we read to do, items that we should be discussing. And so it's not only going to take the rest of this meeting to do that, but it will continue for the next, I'm guessing, two or three meetings based upon previous experience with this process.
Anybody else before I speak? Okay, hearing that clarification of intent, I oppose the motion. I think this matrix has some real value to us and it's not in deciding who's top 10 is compared to anybody else's top 10, but it gives you a visual representation across each row of the thumbnail sketch of how people feel about things. And I'll use an example, Larry, scroll me up to the first page of this. If you wanted to consider the issue of moratoriums on short term rentals, and that is, you know, after the date of the enactment and somebody buys a house and wants to do short term renting, it would prohibit, be prohibited, either three, four or five years. Those are the choices we have. And if I were to use this matrix as a decision making tool, I would say, okay, what's the pleasure of the group? Do you want three, four or five? Put it in the right hand column and say for now, that's our tentative decision on that issue. And I would go down the list. I understand Dana's view is that that's going to forestall some discussion of the holistic reason for approaches. His is limited permits, mine isn't and so forth. Which is why I can bendle it a little bit, but I cannot, in my own vote, discharge this whole effort as not worthwhile. Because I think it's going to be very worthwhile whether we start down the list tonight or whether we have a couple of meetings or one meeting hopefully as a seminar. And then we go back to this. It's still going to be a decision making tool. And some of the decisions may be enlightened by what people's individual proposals are. I don't think anything I say in a seminar is going to be different than what I'll say measure by measure. And other people may have different approaches and different views. But how many people would like to, just a show of hands tentatively, would like the opportunity to make a presentation of their, their planned approach? I know Lynn does and I know Dana does. Blake, Beth, are you interested in doing that? I see ambivalence on your faces.
As I indicated, my presentation would pretty much resemble my, my matrix contributions.
Okay, Blake?
Yeah, it wouldn't take me long to do it. That's what everybody wants to do.
If we devoted 15 to 20 minutes to each person at our next meeting, which tentatively is set for July 29th, nine, 10 days from now, whenever. Even assuming NIP would want to take 15 minutes to present his and if I have the opportunity, I'll take 15 minutes to do mine. We're really still talking about four plus a little more time for Blake and Beth's. You're talking about doing that within a two-hour period if it's a 15-minute presentation or and five or 10 minutes of, of questions and answers. Where it'll bog down is if it becomes an hour's presentation. I'm sorry, a short presentation and an hour's worth of discussion on each proposal. If we have to make it two meetings, so we make it two meetings. I mean, we're racing along at the speed of a snail anyway, so whether we take one or two meetings to do it is, is kind of not so relevant. So my vote's going to hinge on if we're going to, if the implication of this motion is that we discard this matrix and not use it until we've heard all the proposals, then I'll oppose the motion. Because that means we waste an hour tonight that we could make some decisions, tentative decisions. If we're going to use this for the rest of the meeting and just not deal with the, the high-pressure items until we hear the individual proposals, then I'll vote the other way. So here I am on the fence as well. I see Lynn and then Beth.
Oh, okay, I, I think that the, that this new chart has value. And I think that we could go through it, and I think I'm going to suggest that you go through it and say, does anyone think that this parameter, you know, you, you choose the ones that you think would not depend on a presentation. And, and if, if someone disagrees with you, then you move on. But otherwise, there are things that we could knock out and simplify this, this chart, and that has, that has value. And as I said, I would like to get a different top line so you can see, you know, what, what, how do these things most fundamentally differ right up front?
Beth?
My other thought here is if we are going to have these presentations, and I think it would be appropriate to wait until we have Nip with us, since he is one of the actual five voting members who is ultimately will make a decision, and I think that he deserves to hear the presentations that would be made.
Okay. The only concern I have with that approach is it's hard enough to have meetings scheduled in advance and, and do the preparation to do them, and then find out somebody's going to be absent, and we would have to postpone the meeting. That's why we have two very well-informed alternates in the wings to, to be seated if we have to. So I don't mind saying we're going to have a seminar, and we really encourage the five commissioners to be there if at all possible. But I'm not going to cancel a meeting a day before the scheduled date because somebody found out that they couldn't be in attendance. That's just bad process as far as I'm concerned. We set the meeting, everybody agrees to do it, and we'd be there or we fill a seat with an alternate. Again, we're still making tentative decisions. The only two important irrevocable decisions we will have in front of us is what to put in the public hearing proposal and what to do as a final rule if we decide to even do this as an ordinance, because we haven't really guaranteed that we're going to do that. Everything else is a work in progress, including hearing the presentations. We have Zoom technology. If somebody's going to be missing, they can watch the literal, literal video presentation. So that, that really shouldn't be an issue. So enough said from my perspective on that. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I didn't, okay. No other discussion on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand.
I forgot what the motion was.
The motion was to read it back as best I have it in my notes, and Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong. Move to go to individual proposals instead of the matrix. Does that capture it, Dana? All right, Dana says that captures it. It's still silent on my intent to continue, and, and I, I guess I didn't get a good sense from Dana whether his motion embodies that we stop and adjourn if the motion passes. Dana, do you intend that we stop and adjourn if the motion passes? And schedule a seminar for the next meeting?
My, my motion basically was to, to argue that discussing piecemeal in this way has not been productive for the last four to six months. And that we ought to stay the course of two weeks ago, which was to follow Lynn's suggestion of individual proposals, and your suggestion, Rick, that these individual, individual proposals be presented in a top-down fashion with, with their visions. Does that answer your question?
It does. And it informs my vote, too.
So what you're saying is that those presentations would take place. You're not saying whether it would start today or at our next meeting. Is that correct?
Well, if somebody is prepared to offer their plan discussion tonight, I have no objection to doing that tonight as an order of business instead of looking at the matrix. Does anybody, Dana, are you prepared to be the presenter, the first presenter?
I'm not prepared tonight, no. But I was just going to mention, you know, this matrix is a lot of work, and I'm not saying that it necessarily has no value. I'm simply saying, I'm simply saying that we ought to stay the course, do what we said we were going to do, which was present each individual proposal. And then if we need to go back to this matrix, it may prove to be valuable. But I don't think it's going to be proven to be valuable unless we have a top-down vision, which informs why we put the various things in each of our proposals the way we did.
Anybody else?
I'm still not sure what we're voting on. Man, I hear what everybody's saying, but
Motion, as I understand it.
We have to do those first. We say, you're saying that the presentations have to come first before we do anything at all with this chart. Is that correct?
I understood Dana's motion, yes.
Okay.
And when I angled for a statement of intent that we could go to the back of this document and spend what is now an hour doing some of the things that don't bear on the individual plans, the answer I heard was no. And that's what informs my vote. Anybody else discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. I see one. All those opposed, raise your hand. I see four. Motion fails. All right. Leaving open the possibility, because we didn't forestall it with that motion, we'll discuss at the end of the night, which was what our intended, our contention had been, to decide for sure whether we have a seminar approach or not. But having said that, what we intended to do is go through this, and there's two ways to do this, in my view. We can go row by row and use the yellow blocks as an indication of how many people think the issue is a high priority. And, and try and, and guide a tentative decision on each one based on what's in those blocks. Or we can look at how many people have a high priority item on a row and, and take them in order. In other words, the one that is, has got four out of five as priorities was lentils per month. Four people out of five, four commissioners out of five, I'm sorry, four commissioners felt that issue was a high priority. And therein lies the problem that I was trying to avoid that. So that the other way dealing with this is to agree to start at the back of the document anyway, and not discuss items that may be influenced by a seminar approach if we decide at the end of the meeting to do that. So we're back in a circular argument. Would you like to start on administrative measures, or would you like to start at the top of this thing and go down the list?
Administrative measures, if we don't do that, I'm going to change my vote. Not that it would do any good.
So you'd like to go to administrative measures?
Yeah.
Okay. If we do that, it leaves ourselves open to the opportunity of having the seminar approach anyway.
I would also, I made the suggestion twice, and I haven't gotten any response at all, that we do add for each of these a, a row that describes them in their, in their primary mode of limitation.
As the chief staff drafter of this, I will put that in. I don't, I don't see that that's any reason to not have that in there.
Okay, good, thank you.
And people can look at it when I've done it and decide whether I capture the sense of, of their proposal or not. Blake, you were raising your hand and Lynn got in there. Do you have a comment?
I was just, I just assumed start at the top and work your way down. And then each person can present why they came up with what they filled in in their cell.
Okay. That's one and one. Anybody else? Yeah?
I agree with Blake's approach.
Okay. Actually, I do too, and I do that because it's, we're still making tentative decisions. If we decide to have the seminar approach, we can always go back and adjust if we hear a good argument, but I for one am trying to focus us on which way we lean on each one of these things. And, and I think that would be useful to start at the top. Any comments on, in that regard? Seeing none?
I have one. I, I'm not necessarily suggesting that to make a decision about each of these rows. I'm just saying that each person can present why they came up with their reasoning, you know, what their reasoning was for how they filled in each of those blocks. And then after we've heard everybody, we might want to change our mind on what we originally put in there or not.
Okay. All right. Any disagreement with that? Basically do a row-by-row murder board, you know, presentation, or at least people can say why they thought that should be in there, and other people can ask why, too. That's an easy one, because everybody said the same thing except for the years. So who would like this? Pardon me?
Like, huh?
Yeah, I can't scroll this, so. All right, anybody you'd like to discuss? Well, let's put it this way. Three people think it should be a three-year moratorium after purchase before you can do short-term rentals. One thinks it should be four, two think it should be five, and mine had a little caveat, which I'll discuss when we get to it. So let's say, because Dana, why did you feel four rather than three or five?
Dana Oviet, I began thinking about who had short-term, was a short-term rental operator in a NOANC. And I know at least one person I'm pointing to this way, Elm Street, is, is definitely an investment owner, and, and she's been there a year or two. And I wondered if three years was going to be enough to make sure that she might not be allowed to have an investment property there. A shooting's something for more than three. That's basically what I was doing.
Let's, let's try this clarification before we get off and, and, and a point of confusion. This was intended, I believe, to be after the date of enactment. Anybody that you know that already owns a house is not affected by it. It's houses bought afterwards that people intend to do short-term rentals. It's very hard in regulations to say this is retroactive back before you even had the regulation in place. Those things always get tossed out in a court. So it's not designed to be that way. That's why it says, that's the problem with the matrix. That little caveat got left out. It's, it's intended to be after date of enactment. You enacted on January 2021, somebody buys a house in March, three years until they can do short-term rentals. If somebody bought the house in November of 2020, this does not affect them. Okay, so that, that's a clarification of the way I understood this thing. It's certainly how my plan proposed it. Any disagreement with that clarification before we talk about years again? Okay. Dana, so four years, it's immaterial now because of the clarification?
Yeah, no, I stand corrected. I know exactly what you mean.
Right.
Not sure why I extended it to four. It was originally three in the original proposal. And I just wondered if three was going to be enough to be adequate to discourage investment short-term rentals.
All right. Okay, so the people who had five in there, which was Nip, who's not here, and Lynn, who is. Lynn, why did you feel five was more necessary than three?
What I see this limiter was to, to discourage the commercial investor. What I see in some of the proposals, this seems to be the only thing that's in there to discourage that the commercial investor. And it does not prevent them. It only slows them down a little. So I put in other more years as an additional slowing, but it certainly doesn't do it. So let me give you three examples. One is the military. When I was working for the military, the officers were encouraged to buy a house and then keep it as a rental house while, when they moved on. And at the end of their career, then they would have all this real estate with, with rental income coming in, and it would help, help them be in a good financial situation when they left the military. So if they're here for three years, then, then they, they, they can, they could, they're able to do that. Also, someone can buy that house with commercial intent, use a long-term rental for a few years, and then when the time limit is up, convert it into a short-term rental, which is more lucrative. And so again, it's just slowing them down. It's not preventing it. And then someone who's, you know, very innovative could also live in the house while they're renovating it, you know, buy something that's relatively inexpensive, renovate it, and take that amount of time to renovate it and then move out and use it as a short-term rental. So I, I see all, all of these are just, it's nothing other than a slowing down. It's not a prevention. And so because, because of that, I thought, well, the, the longer it is, the more effective that is in slowing things down. But there must But there must be other preventing tools in there as well.
Okay. Okay, I, I would like to offer a comment on the caveat I have in mind. I'm, the more we debate all of these things, the more inclined I am to say the, the majority of the restrictions we've talked about, we should focus on non-hosted rentals. Because that's where arguably we get the noise type of concerns and people doing things that maybe they shouldn't because the owner or the operator isn't there. And along down the road from where we are now, I think we're going to want to go through what we tentatively have decided on and filter it through keeping it simple and take out things that aren't really necessary. One of the things I would do right at the outset is make this provision apply only to those homes purchased that are used for non-hosted rentals. In other words, somebody buys a house after the date of enactment and the house has an apartment or a suite of rooms and they're living there, it would not apply. I have not checked with counsel to see whether that would be a sufficient rational basis argument. Because clearly it treats people differently, it treats the non-hosted renters differently than the hosted renters. And, and I know that that'll certainly be an issue in the minds of the people who do non-hosted rentals. But that's going to happen anyway on lots of measures. So that's why I put that caveat in there. To just have it apply to non-hosted rentals. So thoughts on that or on the deviation of, of years? Larry?
I had the same caveat, if you will. And the intent is to manage the commercial profit motive. At the Lynn's point, there's two major things. This is one of them, there's a delay of three years. And the second one is that I pick the number of nights per year, which is later on. And between the two of them, it would certainly restrict it. And, and I know I'm going off the, the row, but sensitivity analysis says that 100 nights per year, you, you know, somebody could pay for the mortgage, utilities and the taxes, and that'd be net profit of zero. So, you know, so I think the maximum would be is 100 nights and one could have discussed less than that. But between those two, then I think that would manage the commercial profit motive. So that's, that's why I kind of went that way.
Okay, Lynn? Blake, Lynn and then Blake.
Yeah, I'm not, I would like more clarification to make sure we're all talking about the same thing for hosted. Because in, in, you know, some of it, it, you know, obviously if it's in the house, same house, that's obviously hosted. But then we, when we get into next door, but then you don't, the owner doesn't really have to be there. There can be somebody else who lives somewhere in the fire district or maybe not in the fire district, you know? It gets, it just, it gets a little farther, a little farther away from that the owner is right there onsite taking care of it. So I think until, I, I see your hosted and non-hosted as being good to address, but maybe not quite yet. Until we've got that other, those other parameters nailed down.
Okay. Blake?
Blake Powell. So my blank cell here is entirely intentional. I, I'm fundamentally against the whole concept of having some people in the community have certain rights relative to these regulations and some that don't. Whether it's how long you've owned your house, whether you're seasonal or not seasonal, how many you have per street, all these things. I, I think it's fundamentally unfair. But it's also contrary to what we've said over and over again in many different ways, which is the purpose of all this is to try to maintain a sense of community. So as soon as we start setting up a system where some people have different rights than others relative to these regulations, we're going completely contrary to this sense of community. I agree with the intent that you want to limit the investor opportunities where there's absolutely no one that's residing in these houses full-time. But I think you do it by limiting the number of nights per year, similar to what Larry was saying. Whether it's per month, per year, whatever it is, but a limitation on that accomplishes that. But I'm very much in favor of treating everybody the same when it comes to how these rules are applied.
Okay. Others? Lynn?
I agree with Blake that you can completely do it with number of nights per year. The trick is where you set that number of nights per year. Because I think some of the proposals would very well allow commercial activity.
Okay, others?
One more point too, just relate to what I was saying earlier. We, we seem to be jumping to the worst-case scenario in all this and trying to prevent that. But, you know, in the case where someone moves to no-ank and they buy a house and they want to rent out their home with a short-term rental two or three times a year, we're prohibiting that by having this moratorium. And so, I mean, I don't see that as being a problem if they want to do it on a limited basis like that. So we're already in, in, do we want to just jump to the worst-case scenario and prohibit everything? Or do you want to make it reasonable for the community members?
Anybody else? Dana?
I don't think it's unreasonable to ask a person to wait three years until they open up a commercial Airbnb or HomeAway business. That's, that's my first thought. And my second thought is, Blake, I think there are more people who run investment Airbnbs and HomeAway's in town than, than you're aware of. So I don't think this is a worst-case scenario and I don't think it's hyperbole to, to think about investment becoming a problem in no-ank.
Okay, I have Rick Smith, and I've been breaking my own rule several times, my apologies. The reason I see value in this issue is for the very reason of people who might want to start buying a house in order to rent. As Lynn points out, there are precious few of these rows, issues, measures that address that issue. So if we don't do this one, what do we do instead? What I really didn't like is in the original matrix back in May, there was, if you recall, a column that basically said, that defined an investor as somebody who's here for less than 30 days and they were prohibited from doing any of this ever. And, and that just, I didn't think that passed the rational basis test. You know, somebody who's here for a week but is a wonderful neighbor versus somebody who's here for five or rents for five weeks and is not. So that's kind of how this, I think, evolved. I'm not sure how or who, how it evolved, but if we don't do something like this, what's the restraint on people who want to buy houses for the purpose of short-term renting? Because I think we've already agreed in our goal-setting that the trend towards more of these residential properties being commercialized is not something we think is good for knowing. And the people doing it are going to strongly disagree with what I just said. But this commission has kind of leaned in towards the fact that the trend towards more of these things are not good business. I keep going back to page one of our, our overall knowing zoning ordinance, which talks about, you know, the, the general health and welfare and well-being of the citizenry. It doesn't talk about how you can commercialize your residential property to make a profit. So in my leaning, I'm going to lean towards the peace and quiet of the neighborhood and lean away from people who are, are trying to either defray taxes or stay in their home, or you put any kind of justification on it that you will. But it, as I've said many times before, it's really a hotel. You're taking your private residence and you turn it over theoretically every couple of nights if, if you're really, really aggressive in this thing. And I don't think that's good for knowing. And I don't think it's consistent with our ordinance statement of purpose. Not the one we designed for the short-term rental, the one in the blue book. So if not this measure, then what? Beth?
Just my two cents, the reason that I was in support of the three years. You know, I hear what Blake is saying, but my thought is if I'm buying a house in this community and I want to be a part of this community, I'm probably buying a house here not to rent out my house, but to live in my house. I mean, my concern for this regulation and why we should permit it is really twofold. To let families who have been here, maybe, you know, lived here, grew up here and own a house here, allow them to be able to keep that house. And two, if one of a, a member of our community gets into financial trouble whereby they cannot afford their house any longer, to kind of give them the opportunity to, you know, offset the taxes and insurance by being able to rent it out on a limited basis. Those, those are my two, I know everybody else has their particular number one or two goals. Those are my goals for the regulation. So if some, that's why I don't see any problem with the moratorium as, you know, invading a sense of community. Because I think you buy here, or hopefully you buy here because you want to be a part of our community for the long haul. And hopefully for at least three years, you, you can afford it. If you can't, you shouldn't have bought it in the first place. Or you probably couldn't have afforded to buy it in the first place if you get into trouble that quick. That's just my rationale.
Okay, others? Okay. So what's your pleasure on this? Do you want to go with the, the greatest number? Or do you want to lean towards Lynn's view that it's five is better than three in terms of depressing the interest in, in speculating on, on homes for SDRs? Or do you go with Blake's view that this is perhaps not such a good idea to do at all? Views on that? I, Lynn and then Blake and then Beth?
Whatever number of years that we decide, I think this is one of the ones where we need to look back through at the end, come back through. So I'm going to suggest that we agree on some number of years and then come back through. If we end up going with what Blake has suggested, which is limiting to 45 nights a year, then we probably don't need this. But we haven't done that yet. So I think we should have it, have it here now and then revisit it.
And, and that's, that's fair, that's the filtering I talked about. When we get all done, what can, what can we do without? Okay.
And same thing for your hosted, non-hosted.
Yeah.
Get on the line.
Okay, Blake?
Blake Powell, I, I was just going to say something similar. I mean, I don't think we need to vote on specific number here. I think we've heard each other's out and the perspective of it, but further to what Lynn was saying before, you know, each of these things is, may be dependent on other line items throughout this whole table. So once we go through the table and we've heard it, wherever its perspective is, we come back around again and we can decide, make, you know, more formal decisions if we want to.
Okay. Beth?
Yeah, I, I understand the value in that. I mean, I, I don't know that I could make a finalized decision on the moratorium issue without knowing where we're standing on the number of, of nights.
Okay. So would you like to just leave it the way it is for now and consider it was a healthy debate? And we'll keep it in the back of our mind? Is that what I'm hearing? Kind of heard Blake and Beth say that, I thought I heard Lynn say that. Well, you said we could pick a number. Maybe having heard Blake and Beth, maybe it's not so necessary to. Yeah, either way, I'm that way too. I'm, I'm more pleased with the nature of the debate than making a hard and fast decision. Because I know we're going to change a lot of these things down the road. Okay, so let's leave that one then. Go to the next one, which is, there's two categories of unruly behavior. One of them is lifted out of our existing no-ank ordinances in other places about this no objectionable traffic congestion, noise, smoke odor. We just lifted that language, so it's kind of already there. And then some of us have the, the limit in there in the next row. And, and I, as I, and there, there are two different choices there. One is no outside music or loud noise between 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM. And there's another one that's between 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So they're just an hour shift. Blake?
And the third choice is there's no limit. So once again, I intentionally have a blank box here because I don't know why we would set a limit between 10:00 and 9:00 AM. Does that mean it's allowed between 9:00 and 10:00 PM?
No.
Point is no objectionable noise, period, end of story. Well, why are we setting limits?
Because there's a difference between an average amount of noise that's maybe objectionable is in the eye of the beholder. But outside music, loud noise, actually, there should be conversations in there. The way I have it in that graphic decision document, it's a little fuller than this. That's really your standard where if somebody's being really obnoxious, you call the police and, and that's, there, I know from experience, they're going to come and they're going to talk to the people and quiet them down. But if it's 2:00 on a Saturday afternoon, you know, it's, it's going to be so vague as to be there will be no enforcement. There.
You don't want objectionable noise anyway, so.
There are different layers.
To in the afternoon either.
Okay, others? Okay. My comment, Blake, I'm sorry, Dana?
Dana Oviat. The reason I don't have anything in there is because I started to wonder how you're going to monitor and enforce all these issues. And the only thing that I could think of was to put it in the contract between the owner and, and the renter, you know, baked, baked into the HomeAway contracts and Airbnb contracts that this is to be in there and that you would sign a, something that you agree to, to, to have to, to not, you know, be allowed between 10:00 and 9:00 AM. I, I don't think it makes a lot of difference which one we use, just as long as there's something in there that, that renters sign off on so that they, they stand warned that these are the rules.
Others? Lynn?
I agree a lot with what Blake said. And, and, and to that point, you know, with this 10:00 PM, which you know I've had trouble with. But I asked John, I said, what would you do if there was a short-term rental next door? But I asked John, I said, what would you do if there was a short term rental next door and the people at 9:00 or 9:30 are noisy? Because he goes to bed about 8:00. He said, well, I just get I get up and I go over there and pound on the door and tell them to knock it off that this old man wants to sleep. So I mean, that would be the, so if, you know, at what point do we try to have the have these times that aren't going to work for anybody everywhere and spend a lot of time talking about what the time should be? And I've noticed that at 7:00 AM, there are lawnmowers going, there's all kinds of activity in our in our neighborhood by seven. So these end up being pretty arbitrary times. And, you know, it is just, you're, when people are coming in and and short term rentals, I mean, when I'm coming into a short term rentals, which we use a lot ourselves, I figure that I'm a guest in this community and I want to be on my very best behavior as a guest in this community. So I'm always trying to be very conscious of the surrounding people. And I think that 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 standard, just in general, is a good one. You know, no, no unruly behavior, just be on your best behavior. That being said, sometimes it's good to have something to point to when you're, when you've got a neighbor who's complaining, this is exactly what we're talking about between these hours. Because we also have got to decide on the enforcement end of it, what is, what is okay and what's not okay? And if someone's going to, that's a very powerful thing we have that we tend to be going toward is that if you're not following what we say, you're going to lose your license. That's very powerful. And that's a, that's a, that's a big protection for the for the surrounding homeowners too. So, so I'm thinking out loud, but those are the arguments.
Okay. Mike? My view is there are layers here. They're two different things. Non-impairment standard is all sorts of those things, noise, smoke, odor, under other unsuitable conditions at any time are to be avoided. And clearly, the person doing the renting would have that as their guidance. Again, I keep saying, once you see the decision document, all of these things are much more fleshed out for your choice. And but they also have more of a justification. The second one, the limits, that's very specific. That's just outside music, loud noise. In the larger sense, it also includes loud conversations. Honest to God, I mean, if you don't believe anything, believe the fact that I've dealt with regulations like this before. And if you just say, don't do it, you have nothing that's enforced and therefore you can have anything occur. Between whatever hour we pick in the evening that the community says that's the time when all of this really loud stuff shouldn't happen, till whenever you want it to be in the morning, that's much more enforceable. Whether it will be perfect or whether it'll ever be enforced to my satisfaction or yours, I don't know. But if you don't put a constraint on that and somebody's making a ruckus at midnight and all you have is no objectionable noise, you really pretty much have nothing. And therefore, why bother? And I think we ought to bother because this is one of the fundamental things we started out with 18 months ago to try and deal with. Anybody else? Beth?
Yeah, I would agree with you, Rick. I mean, it's easy to say no objectionable noise, but what's the standard? You know, if it's five people sitting on a front porch and they're allowed, maybe some one person doesn't think that's objectionable, or they do. And then if it's a party of 100 people, you know, you know, maybe what's objectionable there is is more or less. I think we've got to, I don't think these two categories are really mutually exclusive. I think we can bring them together. I think we should bring them together. It just gives that added layer of protection to the neighbors. And that's was one of the, you know, that was the whole impetus for this whole thing. When that one guy came and said that all hours of the day and night, people were coming and going and it was noisy. That's the kind of thing we want to prevent, you know? So I think we should have a limit on top of the unruly behavior general.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Much as we did with moratorium, I would say that's a useful debate, getting people's ideas on things. But as with the last one, it's not necessary that we make a decision, at least between hours of the day. I will say, you know, I've continued to work on what I would think my view of the right plan would be. And I filtered all of this through the lens of trying to simplify it and cut out things that really aren't necessary, in my view. And I had already consolidated these two things and and basically made it one on unruly behavior. And it read well. I mean, it's basically, you have a general condition and you have a limit on based on time of day. So I won't say I'm going to make a change to this matrix. But simplification might include consolidating these different points into one one measure. Want to move on to events and parties? There are some differences between people's approaches, so it's worth a debate. Blake, can I take the fact that you left that one blank? Your logic on the first two was, you know, not that you had a preference, but your preference was not to have anything. Can we take that as the same for that one?
I would just say if you're not making noise, you're not doing the objectionable, parties kind of fall under that, so.
Yeah, it's a noise maker, yeah, okay.
You can, you can call it out specifically if you want. Most of these Airbnb and VRBOs, they're already prohibited to some degree anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot do, yeah. Lynn, you're the only one besides me that had words in those cells. You want to go first or do you want me to go first?
You can, you may go first.
Okay, thanks. I had a kind of a parsed approach to these things. Again, considering that hosted rentals have a host there and nothing will get out of hand because of that, that's my logic. I said that events should be prohibited at non-hosted rentals only and allowed at hosted rentals. And in the decision document, I've defined events as the things that are major, almost commercial operations, DJ-driven music, amplified music. You know, wedding reception where there's a caterer. To me, that's an event. A party is something more low key. I mean, if you have a maximum number of people in a rental party of eight, I think my approach will, yeah, it's, you can have a party at either hosted or non-hosted rental, but not more than double the number in the rental party. So if you have a maximum of four rooms and a maximum of eight adults, you can have another eight people come to a party. So that was the logic in what I had in that cell is they're dissimilar things, so treat them differently. Lynn?
I think that events do, by your definition, do not belong in these. Those are clearly very commercial activities. And I just don't think they belong in the residential neighborhoods. And the number in the rental party is seems that it's basically the size of the, you know, the size of the place you have. I mean, if you have two people coming in the rental party, a couple, that they're renting, you know, a place that has a nice, large dining room and kitchen, that they can only have two more people, that that doesn't make sense to me. Whereas if they have three couples, then they can have 12. Or if they have some children, they can have some more. So that that seems like arbitrary and it it doesn't make much sense. I, having said that, I just thought of family gatherings that we've had and we've had, we've been someplace and we've rented, everybody in the families rented a different house and we all got together. And they were, they were indoor quiet parties. And we didn't have, we had fewer than 20 people there that that worked well. And the houses generally didn't cover, you know, handle more than than that easily. So that that was arbitrary, but I thought it would be good to have some kind of limit for the same reasons that you said before. But enforcement of that, you know, could be an issue. You could argue against it from that standpoint.
Boy, I'm I'm surprised 20 guests at any one time. If you use your same logic you used a minute ago, you have two people in the rental party and they invite 20 people. That's, that's a pretty big party. I don't know that it's arbitrary to to condition the number of guests based on the number in the rental party, but you get a maximum of 16. If if you follow all of this stuff through and you're, you've got, let's say, well, I'm presuming the things I think are important elsewhere in this document actually pass. But let's say you had a maximum of double the people in the rental party. You'd never have more than 16 unless you had a house with seven rooms, which very few houses have that. I almost think 20 guests is a larger, potentially larger number of people coming to party than the way I described mine, which, you know, two part, two people would have two more people. Eight people would have eight more people.
Let's let, yeah, let's take the example again of I have a bunch of relatives and we've rented different, each of us, each family unit has rented a different house. Now, if we're going to get together for dinner, we're going to gather at the places that have the larger kitchens and dining rooms. And and just because it's John and me, we might have the largest kitchen and dining room, but we can only have two more people. We can't have 12, 12 guests, let's say. But so that would have to go to, you know.
Not unless you're renting to someone. You would have to be doing short term rentals in order to be limited, wouldn't you?
No, I'm, no, I'm saying if we are all staying, it's like a family deal. I'm just giving it, you know, hypothetical example. But if, but if there are a group of us that have gone and we're all doing a short term rental. So let's say Beth brings her daughter, let's say all of all of us go out. And so John and I show up and we've got the house with the biggest dining room and kitchen. But we all want to get together for one evening for dinner. Well, I've got the best place to do it, John and I do.
I see, it's not your house.
Right, no, 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 we're, we're only short term rentals, all of us.
Four families come to Know Inc., they rent four different houses. They decide to have their family meal at the house with the largest kitchen or the largest backyard.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they could exceed the double number of that one house. Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, every proposed solution is going to have that kind of problem, I suspect. So at least we're clarifying it. Other people on this issue? Did I see a hand or not? Larry?
Okay.
Larry Dunn?
Larry Dunn, yep, I done muted. Well, I, I'm starting to get a distinction between events and parties. Events is a more of a commercial enterprise where somewhere along there, somebody gets paid per head. You know, because there's a caterer there or you're charged for it. So there's a commercial element to it. And I think it's, it's fairly straightforward to limit that. There are a lot of Airbnb contracts that limit that and don't allow that. So I don't think there's any issue there. I think when you get the parties, you know, I've been listening to everybody and went, you know, there's, that one's, that one's more mushy. And I'm not sure how you control that other than through other mechanisms, like, you know, whether it's the noise, the, what the two we just did. So I kind of started to lean towards prohibiting events and not so much on parties.
Others? That would clean this one up if we just said events, arguably the way I defined them, but we could change that definition. Events are prohibited, parties were silent on. Any disagreement with doing it that way for now? Dana?
What did you mean that that parties were silent on for now? It means we're deferring the decision on parties, is that what you?
If I were to rewrite this for our next meeting, I would, I would change that left column to say events. And then across there, I would say, well, NIP already says prohibited, mine says prohibited, non-hosted. I would just say prohibited, take out the reference to parties. That's what I'm hearing Larry say, someone nod in in support. And I'm trying to decide if we can find consensus on that one, that you prohibit events however you define them. You heard me before on how I would define them, but we can change that. And don't say anything about parties. And therefore, they're allowed. Right? At least they're not prohibited. So commercial quality events, if you wanted just to find it that way for a moment, would be prohibited. And we wouldn't say anything about parties. We wouldn't have a numerical limit, whether it's 20 or double the number of people in the rental party, which are the two other options in in here. Does that clarify it, Dana? Yeah, okay, Lynn Marshall?
Yeah, the question that I would have is if we say party, if we take out the parties prohibited, because that is in a lot of short term rental requirements or contracts. And but we can't count on them because people are going to rent through different companies and there'll be different ones that spring up. So the whole thing, I'd be willing to take parties out as long as, this depends on our enforcement, as long as we have enforcement so that we can get to that three strike, you know, to prevent party houses, we can get to that three strikes and you're out very quickly to get to that, to get to that hearing that they can get their license.
Here's how this would be dealt with in a regulatory sense, much as I described the other issue above, the unruly behavior. If you take out language that says partyers are prohibited, you will have no way to enforce that. So if somebody has a loud party, but it's not a commercial grade event with a caterer and amplified music and a DJ or any of those types of things, you won't be able to come to a hearing and say, we want to pull a permit from someone because they made a lot of noise. That's why there's language in here that says you have to define it. And then you have to say whether it's allowed or it's not allowed. Otherwise, you don't have an enforceable provision.
Then I, then I will stick with not allowed.
So events and parties are not allowed. Okay, here's what's going to happen. Somebody has a noisy get together with people and they're going to call and want it enforced. No matter how many number of people there are in a noisy get together, that'll become a provision that we'll try to enforce through the zoning officer. Now, maybe the unruly behavior standard up above will be sufficient for that. And we don't have to enforce on the basis of a, you know, a party that's defined as being prohibited. Question is there, is there a definition of parties that we're willing to allow? Or whether we want to say events and parties prohibited? And then have to answer the angry neighbor as to why we don't have, you know, a couple who comes over to visit another couple or a couple that comes to a party, a rental party of six. I'm just trying to find the ludicrous. I'm, I'm just trying to find the ludicrous extreme to, to get us to focus on this. Can be noisy, is it a party? I don't know, they were drinking beer, your honor, I, I, you know. I think we need to make as many of these things into an enforceable standard as we can, or we seriously ought to consider not having it in there at all. And the choices are, events prohibited, parties allowed, events and parties prohibited, and then you have to figure out how to define them. It's 10 and nine, let's try and do one more item. I would propose we not continue down the list, I want to leave, no, let's, let's do this, if you will. We just had a useful debate on four items on this list, and, and that's helpful, and, I hope you'll go and make some notes about what you heard and how you felt, so you don't lose track of that, because this is going to be a long process if we go through all this, it's the same way. For the next nine minutes, let's now talk about, we, the motion failed to suspend our activity and, and schedule, plan a seminar approach for the future. Doesn't mean we can't do that. Anyway, you know, and I think we ought to have a little bit of debate, having heard this and thinking about it a little. How do you feel about having the next meeting or two be geared towards people making, giving a presentation on their individual plan? I don't mind doing it, as long as we set it out as a scheduled event in the future, and it doesn't suspend other work that we had planned to do. That's, that was the reason for my vote. And again, I, I think what we're doing, what we did tonight, I'm comfortable doing that approach, is two or three things in my plan that really is going to require some explanation on my part, and then some questions on your part, and then you can decide what to do with it. But I don't have to present my whole plan, I just need the time to talk about it as we get to it. But I don't want to forestall Lynn and Dana who wanted to give a presentation of, of their plan. So now's the time to debate it and, and see, have you reflected, do, you know, feel a little differently, would you like to do the seminar? Because if we do it, I would say Dana and Lynn should be the first two on the agenda for the next meeting, and don't take the two, full two hours, I hope, but at least, you know, a 15 or 20-minute presentation, and 15 or 20 minutes of question and answer, you know, maybe we do three in a two-hour meeting. What's, what's your view on that? Lynn?
I would very much, as you know, like to, like to do the, the presentations, because as I've said, it's not just to get some, some of these other views out, you know, in their entirety, but it's also, I really want to understand where other people are coming from, and question those, and again, to really tie these toward the goals. Are we meeting the goals? If we took this approach in its entirety, how well does it meet the goals? And, and I think that, and I think the usefulness of that, is it really will highlight how much flexibility we have in crafting these, how things hang together, and there's more than one way to do things potentially, that would, that would solve, that would allow us to meet all the goals.
Okay. Dana, I'm assuming you're in favor of it? Yeah, okay. Thank you for not having the need to speak on it, I, I kind of knew that. I'm going to agree with the both of you. If nothing else, I know you both want to make a presentation, and if we can constrain it this way, it doesn't become an all-consuming exercise, a presentation and question and answers, because I don't want to spend the rest of the summer doing just the presentations. But if you two guys want to, lady and gentleman, agree to a 15-minute presentation, and no more than 20 minutes of question and answers, and then we'll stop, and we'll consider whether we need to go further on that proposal, or we should go to the next one. That would take about an hour, and I'll have mine teed, I'm going to reconsider mine, and, well, at least rethink it, and decide whether I really want to make a presentation or not, which is most effective way, as long as you guys are doing it, maybe I will too, maybe I won't. Larry, Blake, Beth, do you want to be teed up to be able to, I know what you said, Beth, before, it was a little less clear. Larry, I thought he said he could do his in 15 minutes, and Beth, you wanted to talk about your perspective, but your measures were already in the matrix, that's how I heard you. Yeah. I, I can't quite recall, Blake, how you felt. I'm trying to figure out how many we should have people ready to do on the next meeting.
I, I think we should do them all, so just set a time limit on them, that's reasonable to get through them all.
Okay, if we do all, and we allot that kind of time, we're going to need two, two-hour meetings.
No, 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 people don't get that much time, who do it all in one meeting?
I don't think that's possible.
I think it's possible.
Look how long it, it took us an hour to talk about four management measures, everybody's views on them, and we didn't make a single decision on any of them. When you hear an individual proposal, it's going to raise questions, and questions are going to invite answers. I can't imagine constraining people too much further than what I described, which is a 15-minute presentation time and a 20-minute question and answer, and with some rumbling around the edges, that's a half hour per person. We've got seven people. It's four per night. And remember, at, at this meeting, we spent 20 minutes in a motion on whether to even do it or not. These things take more time than you think they will, it's going to, if everybody does it, and everybody needs that amount of time, it'll take two meetings. I, I don't oppose that, I, I'm just saying, that's the time allocation that we're going to have to make. I probably won't take that much time, but I can't guarantee people won't want to ask me questions for 20 minutes. Lynn?
Yeah, I, I think the questions, I think arbitrarily deciding how much for the, for the Q and A ahead of time, I mean, it could be less than that, it could be more, just don't really know until we, until we get into it.
If it's less, I'll be prepared to, to fill the time of the first meeting if I have to, unless somebody else wants to. But if we don't constrain the time, Lynn, I love you, but you're an academic, you'll take two hours yourself if you can. I'm saying that.
No, the presentat, I think the limit on the presentations is fine.
Yeah.
It's, it's the Q and A.
Again, if we don't try and constrain it, it could take the whole evening, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. I want to be expeditious in this process, and not leave things so open-ended. That's why I say, after 20 minutes of Q and A, I'll poll the members. If, if you think it's productive, and you have more questions, and you want to get more answers, we'll extend the time. It's not that you get dragged off the stage, but, you know, we, we've got to have some discipline on these things, or it could, you know, run away from us, and I don't want to see that happen. So, disagreement with 15-minute presentation, 20-minute Q and A, reassess at the end of the 20 minutes. Lynn and Dana are up first. If someone else wants to, they can be third, or I will, I'll wait to the end if you want that too, so I don't want to jump in the way of anybody else who wants to. But at least that, I know Dana and Lynn are the ones most wanting to do this, so I want them to go first, so they have the time, and, and we can see if, at the end of the two, if it's productive, if it's not productive, then we'll, you know, go back to Plan B. Anybody else? It's nine o'clock. We'll proceed that way, then. I had set out for it to be Thursday, the 29th, nine days, 10 days away, whatever that Everybody agreeable to that?
The 29th is on a Wednesday.
Okay, the 30th, then, this is a 21st Tuesday, 28, 29, 30, okay, it would be 30th, good Everybody okay with that? Okay. In that case, motion to adjourn? Dana, is that a motion to adjourn, or do you have a comment?
Dana, we have motion to zip to adjourn, yeah.
Okay, second. Beth? Okay, well, who's in favor, raise your hand. Thank you all, I appreciate it. Sorry to push so hard, but just doing my chairmanly duties, thanks.